All right, let's. Let's call this meeting to order May sixteenth, twenty twenty four, six P M. City Council regular session at Oak Ridge City Hall. Counselor Kenyon, can you lead the room in the pledge of allegiance, please?
Yes, this all stands for the pledge. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Jackie, can you call the roll, please?
Yes. Counselor Coker. Here. Counselor Bjornson.
She is accused of a family emergency.
Okay. Counselor Charman.
Here.
Counselor Brewer.
Here.
Mayor Ketchin.
Here.
Counselor Kenyon.
Here.
Counselor Hollitt.
Here.
All right, thank you. James, you want to discuss the late breaking adjustments to the agenda?
Yes, item number thirteen point nine will be tabled to our next meeting and just those people need to tell us on that contract because we worked out. Item thirteen point ten, state added. Resolution twelve dash two zero two for resolution authorizing applying for an Oregon State Parks Department grant for the Illinois P P contract. And that information with the agenda, the grand resolution to the email to all city councils and also posted on the city website.
Okay, do any counselors have any recommended adjustments to the agenda? Okay, and I have none. We'll move on to public comment. Anyone in the room have a public comment?
I do.
Please.
My name is Campbell and I'm here on behalf of the Lady County Medical Society Foundation, which Shandra and then we're here. And I'm just coming back to see if anybody has interest for us to work on any kind of projects on behalf of the foundation. And so one of the things that we brought up was maybe any kind of like a dental office. We don't necessarily do dental, but if it's something you guys would want or there is interest in the community about wanting a dental office, we are willing to work on that. This kind of as a side project. And otherwise, we're going to move on to another place and I just am hoping we do something here in no shortage, but you know, it may not be the right time.
So what was the foundation again?
It's the Lady County Medical Society Foundation.
Mayor, may I?
Yeah.
Cameron spoke earlier today and. He invited me about this and I initially couldn't find where I put the application for the board. I did find it found it. I put it on the calendar for the meeting where it was brought up, which is February fifteenth. So it is online on Microsoft Word version there, but I also printed some copies. They as well, as you will call the opportunity to join the board. And there seemed to be something just. I think I just forgot to follow up with counselor. I'll leave my application. So paper copies here and Microsoft Word version on. Calendar for February fifteenth.
Great. Thank you for, thank you for coming back and reminding us. We'll, we'll get on it.
Yes.
Any public comment on the Zoom platform? Anything else in the room? Public comment in the room? Okay, I don't see any, so we'll move on. To mayor comments, proclamations. A couple of things I wanted to make sure we knew and remembered about and. Don't forget the Feast Food Education Agricultural Solutions Together, a community planning party that Saturday, May eighteenth, ten to two. And location is. You know where that is, James?
High school.
Okay. Next, residents should know that if they're interested in free firewise work and you live in the city limits of Oak Ridge or Westford, and you have one of the following qualifications of physical disability, elderly, or reduced income, you can get free firewise work done around your home and call Dustin at Oak Ridge Air, seven eight two three four two two. And lastly, again, May is bike month, so get on your bikes and ride around. The weather certainly is conducive. That's all the comments I have to any counselor. I guess we'll move to council comments. Any counselors have comments? Okay, done heard. Moving on to consent agenda. Do I hear a motion?
I moved to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second that.
Okay, a motion was made by Counsel Brewer, seconded by Counsel Kenyon. Any opposed to the consent agenda? Okay, motion passes. Moving on to business from the city council, ten point one, and that's the bus fare twenty twenty four alcohol permit, James.
Thank you, Mayor. All right, the bus fare is scheduled for June twenty one through twenty three, and they are once again applying for alcohol permit. And smoothly, last year's status for everything have approved it.
Okay. Do I hear a motion on this?
I moved to approve the alcohol permit application for the twenty twenty four bus fare.
Second.
Okay, motion made by Counsel Brewer, seconded by Counsel Hollitt. Discussion on the, or questions of staff on this? All right, nothing heard. The motion was to approve the alcohol permit application for the twenty twenty four bus fare. Jack, would you call for a vote, please?
Mayor Ketchin.
Hi.
Counselor Brewer.
Hi.
Counselor Charman.
Hi.
Counselor Coker.
Hi.
Counselor Kenyon.
Hi.
Counselor Hollitt.
Hi.
Okay, motion passes unanimously. Moving on to ten point two, and that's concerts in the park twenty twenty four alcohol permit and one thousand dollar fee waiver request, James.
Thank you, Mayor. All right, there are two items here. The first is for alcohol permit. The three concerts in the park concerts are scheduled for June fifteenth, July sixth, and August seventeenth. And they are requesting alcohol permit again this year. Last year, step representation that is. That's that through that. They are also asking for. Fee waivers for the park rental. For those three dates. I counsel remember that on March twenty seventh, they authorized one thousand five hundred dollars R two B funds and one thousand five hundred dollars of T R two funds for concerts in the park for total three thousand dollars of funding. They hadn't requested over twelve thousand. When this funding was awarded, council did not specify what the funds could be used for in terms of whether or not they had to be used for the park rentals. The cost is five hundred dollars per event to rent the camp theater. So council also recalled that. They gave me authorization to do up to a thousand dollars for this leader in part B waivers to non-profit organizations. So if it were up to me, I would grant one thousand dollars in part B waivers. But policy doesn't really. Dictate reasons why I may deny someone. They are be valid by the one C charity. As part of the Oak Ridge Festival Association, actually numbers included in that. In the bill. So because it wasn't clear to me, council's intention. On that funding. I thought it would be approved during this issue that council would see. Council simply wanted to leave it up to me, in which case I would grant one thousand, not the one thousand five hundred dollars in fee waivers. Or if council wanted to make a. Specific decision on this issue, which could be anywhere from zero dollars to one thousand five hundred dollars R B. Waivers. Council has the ability to offer more than I can, like maybe one thousand.
Thank.
And I attached a bunch of receipts and invoices. Kevin, you know, wanted to show how expensive these people put down, so it's not five thousand dollars receipts and. Invoices. A lot of those are just for one out of three then, so. In total, I'm sure the cost closer than ten thousand. Those are the two issues in front of council.
Thank you, James. Is it, do I hear a motion on the alcohol permit?
I have one. I moved to approve the alcohol permit application for the twenty twenty four Concerts in the Park series.
A second. Okay, motion made by Counsel Hollitt and seconded by Counsel Harman. Discussion on this alcohol permit or questions of staff? Okay, the motion was to approve the alcohol permit applications for the twenty twenty four Concerts in the Park series. Jackie, would you call for a vote, please?
Counselor Charman.
Hi.
Counselor Coker.
Hi.
Counselor Brewer.
Hi.
Mayor Ketchin.
Hi.
Counselor Kenyon.
Hi.
Counselor Hollitt.
Hi.
Okay, motion passes. Do I hear a motion on the fee waiver request? And no motion would be to leave it up to the city administrator. Okay, James, it's your decision.
Okay.
Moving on to item ten point three. And that's the Sasquatch Festival twenty twenty four alcohol permit request, James.
Thank you, Mayor. Another alcohol permit request for Sasquatch Festival scheduled for July nineteenth through twenty first. The first event, but. So that. Alcohol will be served by. Both of our. Following all laws and C regulations, et cetera.
Okay, thank you, James. Do I hear a motion on the Sasquatch Festival alcohol permit request?
I moved to approve the alcohol permit application for the twenty twenty four Sasquatch Festival.
Second.
I'll second that.
All right, motion made by Counsel Brewer and we'll give the second to Counsel Coker. Any questions of staff or? Questions in general? None heard. The motion was to approve the alcohol permit application for the twenty twenty four Sasquatch Festival. Jackie, would you call for a vote, please?
Counselor Brewer.
Hi.
Counselor Hollitt.
Hi.
Counselor Kenyon.
Hi.
Counselor Coker. It's. Counselor Charman.
Hi.
Mayor Ketchin.
Hi.
Motion passes unanimously. Moving on to item ten point four, and that's the alcohol permit request for the Oregon Gravel Grinder twenty twenty four. James?
Thank you, Mayor. Same issue, Gravel Grinder. Scheduled for June twenty seven to twenty nine. You are also requesting alcohol permit. Serving it for years, no problems.
James, I lost audio. Are you, are you finished?
Yes.
Okay. So do I hear a motion on this?
I'll move to approve the alcohol permit application for the twenty twenty four Oregon Trail Gravel Grinder.
I'll second that.
Okay, the motion was made by Counsel Charman and seconded by Counsel Brewer. Any discussion or questions on this? None heard. Again, the motion was to approve the alcohol permit application for the twenty twenty four Oregon Trail Gravel Grinder. Jackie, would you call for a vote, please?
Counselor Charman.
Hi.
Counselor Kenyon.
Hi.
Counselor Coker.
Hi.
Mayor Ketchin.
Hi.
Counselor Brewer.
Hi.
Counselor Hollitt.
Hi.
All right, motion passes unanimously. And yet another alcohol permit request. This will be a party in town this summer. It's item ten point five, and that's the alcohol permit request for the Triple Summit Challenge twenty twenty four, James.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, same thing. It's the Triple Summit Challenge, but there is a typo here. The man is actually July twelve to fourteen. Again, no problems last year. State other permit, I recommend approved.
Okay, do I hear a motion on this?
I moved to approve the alcohol permit application for the twenty twenty four Triple Summit Challenge.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion was made by Counsel Charman and seconded by Counsel Brewer. Any discussion on this issue? Questions of staff? None heard. The motion was to approve the alcohol permit application for the twenty twenty four Triple Summit Challenge. Jackie, would you call for a vote, please?
Counselor Charman.
Hi.
Counselor Kenyon.
Hi.
Counselor Hollitt.
Hi.
Counselor Coker.
Hi.
Mayor Ketchin.
Hi.
Counselor Brewer.
Hi.
All right, motion passes unanimously. We're on to item eleven, eleven point one. Item eleven is business from the city administrator. Eleven point one is discussion of setting a date for a potential work session to discuss the city's hiring policies, James.
Thank you, Mayor. Right. Potential issues come to life regarding. Hiring policies and practices. Talked to Matt Dolls from our city attorney about this. Suggested if we consider having a work session. About this to discuss our current policy and the changes. Like want to make in the future. I know that. June is going to be pretty busy, which I'll discuss later in my other slides, but wanted to. It's from council. They think, council thinks that's a good idea, and if so, we want to try to squeeze that in somewhere in June or if we want to wait until. After budget season in July.
Counsel Kenyon.
I have a couple of questions. One is, could you forward out the policies? Sooner rather than later? And then two. If we did have a work session, my suggestion would be after budget season. For sure, if, if council feels it's necessary. I'm not sure I understand. What, what is the question?
The question is whether or not we have followed policy correctly in the past couple of years. And that's kind of ambiguous. And. Whether or not we want to change the policies as a city policy. That can be changed.
Would we send that to the administration committee? For fellow sees?
I think it'd be more appropriate in this case to send it to the city council. There are. Kind of higher level legal issues, and it's going to require. Council's input decision anyway. I think it'd be more appropriate.
And some, some of the resulting actions might very well end up in the admin committee's lap, Counsel Kenyon, but I think it's important for us to meet in an executive session ahead of that.
Oh, this is a request to have executive session?
No, it says work session.
It's a work session. Yeah, Matt said that it, it, he couldn't find an O R S that would cover doing it in an executive session, at least not at this time.
Understand. So do we want to look at? I don't know. How's the rest of council feel about June or July?
I think I'm with the council union, waiting till after budgets then.
We also have something else that we pushed off till after, so it would come after that. What was that other? Do you remember?
We have. A work session. On July eighteen at five P M, so an hour before city council for charter review. City council work session.
I feel like there was one other thing. I'll have to think of it, but maybe we should do this in August.
I have one question. Do you think it's? We should do it sooner than later based on what it is or?
Discussion. I don't think it's really.
Interesting that we need to have this discussion sooner than maybe so after the.
I don't think so. Can't really fix the past. Like we do this, this can move forward, so. And Matt Dawson didn't say it would be done in the end, so. I mean, that would be my preference. It's just that June, it's. Getting really. Impact of the budget scene.
Well, we're looking at June, James. Is there kind of an open date that would seem to work if we could possibly pull it off? It should be no more than an hour, right?
Right.
Mayor, can I ask a question? Is there, is there a sense of urgency on your part?
I, I think it's better dealt with sooner than later. Yes, I do.
Soon we don't on Fridays.
Nope.
Nope.
I don't know when in July could we do two topics for that work session and combine it?
Honestly, if it's only scheduled for an hour, I feel like it's probably going to need more than that. We were going to do two public hearings in July. Or maybe ones in June.
I, so, so far I'm up to July twentieth, and it's not a single good date. Sorry, June, June twenty fifth. I have Wednesday, June twenty sixth, Wednesday, June twenty sixth is the first. Evening, if there's another day can schedule. That means every single day.
I feel like it's. Sorry.
Go ahead. Go ahead, please.
I was just going to say that considering. We're going to have one. Budget meeting with the committee and one with the council. Is that how it's working out? I feel like we should leave a date open for a potential. Necessary for the budget process.
So we already have the work session scheduled on the eighteenth. Is it possible to do two topics on that work session since it starts at five P M?
On June eighteen.
I'm sorry, July eighteen. You said that there was, I'm looking at it on the calendar. It's the work session scheduled for the charter committee.
But we also have a city council meeting at six to eight.
Oh. Good point.
Well, if it's what I think it is, I think, yeah, maybe sooner than later would be good.
James, what, what, what do you have on June tenth? I don't see anything scheduled, I think.
June tenth is the Parks and Community Services Committee meeting. And there's also a U W C D C monthly meeting at seven.
What time does parks start?
Five thirty P M.
Could we do it in advance of that for an hour?
Fine, Monday.
Any other counselors have comments on that date?
On what date? I'm sorry.
It'd be the tenth of June at four thirty P M.
I, I can't do that. Due to work.
And how, it's an hour for the Parks Committee meeting, James?
Yeah, at least an hour and a half. That's our most active committee. We could potentially do it on, on Tuesday before the budget committee meeting. On June eleventh.
I have R T and P that, that night.
R T and P T R T is going to be canceled because of the budget committee. Or not canceled, but it'll be rescheduled. Application.
Any thoughts on that from the council on the eleventh?
By the sixth. Where's we?
Before the budget meeting?
Yes.
I would have to be late. I have a client until five P M, and I usually eat between five and six. It would be difficult for me to do that.
I prefer July as well.
James, you're about twenty two.
What about Monday, June third?
We have a WAC subcommittee that day.
Well, yes, correct. There is, there is a WAC advisory subcommittee meeting on Monday, June third, five thirty. Those usually will last about an hour. So we can do it at six thirty. Eventually.
I can do that one.
I can't do that one.
Counsel Brewer can do that, okay.
I can.
Are there no dates in July available either?
I haven't looked at July yet. I, I just, I went through every day in June. See if it was an open day. First, one on Wednesday, Wednesday the twenty sixth of June is the first. Fully open.
What about the twelfth? Is there anything on the twelfth? You have stuff booked on the twelfth?
On the twelfth, there is wildfire safety night.
Oh, yeah.
And we're.
So I'm getting kind of a cryptic feel about this, I'm not gonna lie, it seems kind of strange, there's no hurry. But. Counselor Terrence comment was kind of strange to me. That you were saying if it is what I think it is, I think we need to get it done sooner or later. So my question is, is this something specific? Or is this just, we need to go over some things that didn't, haven't worked out in the past? Feels more specific.
We just, we basically need to look at our hiring practices for internal promotions. Again. I mean, what, what we wanted to do is. Right now, there's some subjectivity in them. For example. If our current policy states that we can do internal promotions. But anyone. With similar qualifications must be able to apply. But that's kind of subjective, you know, who is and who's not qualified. So we can strengthen that by saying. You're giving a, a strict. Minimum number of years of service. For the city or in that position we promoted.
That would be according to the qualifications of the job, right?
Yes.
Is there a promotion coming up? That we needed, I mean, why is this urgent? I mean, this doesn't, changing a policy does not. Be urgent to me unless there's something that's, it's gonna affect.
That's, like I said, in my discussion with Matt Dollstrom. He did not advise that it needed to be done immediately.
Just seems like we're trying to squeeze, like, everything into the month of June for some reason, and trying to find a day when there's days available in July, if it's not pressing. At least we could chill, we're just all having a hard time finding a June date. Can we do July? I mean, that way we're not. I mean, between budget and council and my extracurriculars with my kids, June is like super packed for me.
Yes, you can do July, but I'm, you know, very good with some councils that. For it to do it soon, so.
I was just. Okay. Okay.
Well, let's move to July, James, and see what we have.
Um, do it on. Monday, July first, after the WAC meeting. At six thirty P M.
Anyone can't do that?
Council target, no.
Okay.
We could do it on. Tuesday, July second. Normally there's a.
I'm, I'm gone July first, July eighth.
Yes, probably that week. On the July ninth. July ninth, S two, maybe.
Hey, James, I have a quick question.
Yes.
What about next week? Is next week all booked out?
Look. Monday, the twentieth. It is possible.
I have a meeting that night.
Can't do Monday, Tuesday, or Wednesday.
Right.
Of that week.
And then the twenty third, there's charter leasing and cases that'll. Fired again. On the week, Monday is the more of it, twenty seventh. Uh, Tuesday the twenty eighth, there's a public safety committee meeting at six. Eventually by Tuesday, twenty eighth.
Does that work for everybody?
Well, again, I, I have to eat, I'm a diabetic, I cannot go until. Eight P M without food, so I have to eat between five and six.
I have a class on the twenty eighth and three.
All right, Wednesday the twenty ninth, there's nothing that I can do. On Wednesday, twenty ninth.
I can't make that date. Sorry.
Okay, uh. Thursday, May thirtieth is also available. I think that even. For you.
I'm free after six.
Anyone can't make it six o'clock?
Wait. Oh, wait, that's a fifth fight Thursday, isn't it?
Yeah.
I mean, we could schedule it, but I have a feeling that the, that the. Charter review. May want to use that because we're trying to get everything crunched in between. Now and.
In my, but they set the work around.
We could always. Do it at seven, I guess. Okay.
All right, let's make it a date, James.
Thursday, May thirtieth at six P M.
Yes.
For a work session.
What time? Six?
Six P M.
All right. Uh, moving on to eleven point two, James, that's other business and updates.
Yes, all right, just wanted to go over some station stuff, uh, right narrowly. Budget calendar is out. We've made a lot of progress on the budget. We are. Hope that the proposed budget. Will be out. The evening of Monday, June third. Send out the both budget, that time to the budget committee and council. And copy will be available to the public starting on Tuesday, June fourth. Then we've scheduled two budget committee meetings, first for Wednesday, June fifth at six P M. Second one on Tuesday, June eleventh. At six P M. And then having the. City Council project hearing during the, I'm sorry, on special meeting. Set for Monday, June seventeenth. At six P M. The reason I had to schedule that, but probably most likely take two meetings past the budget. Before the end of June. The second. Hearing on the budget with the regular city council meeting on Thursday, June twentieth. It's, yeah. I'm trying to be real diligent about putting it in the calendar, for some of the minds, you know, it's a budget committee. We have now. Couple days before the meeting. That's the. Budget calendar. Uh, the, the charter review. Schedule, council asked last meeting for the charter, we committed to set a schedule. Uh, they would like to have. This on November ballot. So in order to make that possible. Uh, we have to have. Two public hearings. So we're looking at, uh, June twenty seventh. Six P M for the first hearing. July eleventh, six P M for the second hearing. And then a work session with city council. On July eighteenth at five P M, this one hour before the regular city council meeting, July eighteen. Uh, we'll then go to. Uh, city attorney for review. I'm gonna send it to him prior to that, but. Built in this time, in case there are changes after the work session by city council and public hearings. So. I'm gonna get the city attorney, we have in July. Finish that review. Then we're looking at, um, August first. For approval or recognition from city council, the regular city council. Uh, meeting on August first. We're asking it, public, third opportunity. On the, on the changes that they've made. And then we believe that the deadline to submit the draft, daughter, August twenty seventh, we're still checking on that. August twenty seventh is the deadline for folks to apply to run. For city council elections, so we're assuming it's the same day. And they're like, uh, as the video mentioned, against additional. Charter review, subcommittee meetings. The next one scheduled for next Thursday. At six P M. Those are the second for Thursday, every month that. You may add additional meetings, because there's only two. Regular meetings scheduled before these public hearings. Starting. Uh, so we're meant to concentrate on answering the question, as I have regarding the meeting. Post that term.
What's the cost to the city to put this on the ballot?
I don't know. Uh, that's one of the things that, uh, the chair, Matt Vick, Matt. Uh, is looking into our review of the process. I assume there'll be some cost, I just, I just don't.
Okay.
There will also be some cost with publishing notices for the meeting. But now that we use the hybrid data hurdle for that, uh. It's less than a hundred dollars per notice, but saves us a considerable amount of money, compared to. Close to thousands of dollars. Costs of pressure there.
Any other questions about that? Any other business from the city administrator?
Uh, let's see. Yes, the, um, thank you, Rick. We need to have a joint work session with the planning commission. For part two of the T G M's, uh, code project. I am. Going to suggest we do that on June sixth. So on June sixth, that's a regular, uh, council meeting. We've already scheduled an executive session for five P M. Uh, for the first executive session on the city administrators annual review. So. I'm thinking. But I want to know counsel's opinion. Would thirty minutes be enough time to do? The first executive session on the C A review? And then we could move into the joint work session at five thirty? Right in the six P M? Council meeting, or do we need to? Perhaps start the executive session at four thirty, before thirty, five thirty? For the executive session on the eval? Then do the T G M at five thirty?
I think we've still got issues with Council Kenyon having to take a.
Yeah, I. I won't make it, so. It's up to you guys. To do whatever you want to do. I mean, any meeting can be held early, I just won't be there.
Okay. So James, your, your thought is that the regular session that happened that day is a joint session as well? Are you?
My thought is that is that our regular city council meeting on June sixth, six P M is gonna be pretty full. So.
You need the time of the half hour, yeah, okay.
Yeah, plus, we, we already have the executive session scheduled for five P M.
You do five P M?
Notations.
Say it ten times.
Uh, potential. Could we do the T G M work session on Thursday, May thirtieth? The week before. Since we're already having a work session on the. Hiring practice.
So if we go by the schedule, that would. I don't expect it. It's probably gonna be regular by then.
James, how time critical is this?
Uh, I don't want to push it back too far, because we've been trying to schedule these type of meetings on regularly scheduled. Council meetings, it just happens to be, this one is very full. Um, we do have a little bit of room in the, in the, in the timeline, but not a lot.
Okay.
So. What would James suggest to the thirtieth? That would put it ahead by a week. Uh, and that's only two weeks away to, um, getting the planning commissioners on board for the same day. Would reduce the likelihood of that. So. I wouldn't, I don't expect it to take too much time, thirty minutes, forty five tops. And it's a presentation from, uh, M I G E consultants for the, uh, T G M project. They wanted to have both the planning commission and city council in the room at the same time. At the beginning of the project, because council and planning commissioner nearly threw out the, the whole thing, so.
Right.
Really, and as we just discussed, there's no other dates in June.
Can we do the C A? Review after the council meeting?
Um, we, we could, yes.
We used to do executive sessions at the end of the meeting all the time.
I mean, I'm, I'm finding that that's totally council.
Probably we're not limited to thirty minutes.
To me, that sounds like about the only thing we have left here, we, you know, it's so hard in this summertime, so. Why don't we try to stick in on the end of that regular session?
All right, so for June sixth, we'll do five thirty. T G M's joint work session with planning commission. And then move the C A evaluation executive session number one. To after. Um, that brings me to my next question, uh, so the second executive session of the C I C A evaluation scheduled for. The twentieth at five P M. Prior to the, uh. Regular city council meeting. Uh, but I'm wondering if, if that's the. I'm wondering, do we need a full hour? Or do you want me to move that to five thirty? Or do you want me to move it to after the? City council meeting at six P M? If you think it's consistent with, uh. The first executive session.
I think the second one needs, needs to be a full hour, just because it's kind of the. The wrap up, so.
I'd rather have it at the end of the meeting, me too.
Yeah. Okay.
Do we want to start this city council meeting earlier, or just leave it sitting? Why?
Yeah, I'd either way, but you know, make sure Don eats.
For consistency, I think we should leave it this way.
It could be a late night, because we're gonna, it's due twentieth. Budget issues. If the R T and P T R T committee can do it, I'm straight, no breaks. Council.
Yes, I would hope so.
Okay, then I will move the executive session number two, C L C evaluation on June twentieth to the end. Of the regular city council meeting. Start at. Six P M. Um, if only, see what else, oh, the, uh, Greenwater Spark Volunteer Cleanup Day. Has been set for June first. Ten AM to three P M. Uh, thank you, Council Hall, for making that fire. That was our last council meeting before that. First, I just want to bring up everyone's attention, June first, ten AM to three P M. Will, uh. Any help passing out fires, appreciate it. I think that's all I have.
Okay. Um. We've got item thirteen now, that's ordinances and resolutions. Uh, before we dive into these, uh, James, if you could give a reason why we're doing all these second readings twice. Reason why we're doing all these second readings twice and, uh. Go for it.
Yes. All right, uh, so if it was a late meeting that night, and we had all these resolutions and. We all just forgot that, uh, the resolution can only be passed. Two readings on the same day, if the first reading. Was asked by unanimous vote, they were not, they were all, um. Five to sixty one. So, uh, spoke to our citizens, like, so that's remedy, and said, just be safe, follow council rules. Um, it's not, it's not chartered by, it was just council rules, uh, be safe, we should. Have a second reading for all of them now. Uh, by title only. In books. Take. Second read, but.
Okay, um, before I get started, what I'll do is, um, just open it up for public comment for. All of the resolutions, uh, that'd be resolution four twenty twenty four through. Resolution ten twenty twenty four, and those are all committees, so. Open up for any public comment on any of those resolutions before we go through these, uh, second readings. Anyone in the room have a comment? Or online?
There is.
Okay. Yep, go ahead.
I think there's one hand, um.
Uh, I'm not seeing that, okay?
Is he catching?
Uh, that's.
That's the mouse's, oh.
Oh, the mouse, the hand.
Okay. Uh, hearing no public comment, uh, on any of the resolutions, we'll move forward, uh, thirteen point one is. Resolution zero four twenty twenty four administration advisory committee second reading. Um. So we just go right into the second reading, James, it's no motion, no nothing?
I think we would, we do need, uh, we do need motions and a vote.
Okay.
Well, councillor Tarman, yes.
I move to approve and adopt resolution zero four dash twenty twenty four after a second reading by title only.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion was made by councillor Tarman, I'm sorry, who was the second? Councillor, councillor Brewer, okay. All right, any discussion on this? Jackie, would you call for a vote, please?
Yes. Mayor Ketchum.
Hi.
Councillor Hallit.
Hi.
Councillor Tarman.
Hi.
Councillor Kenyon.
Hi.
Councillor Coker.
Hi.
Councillor Brewer.
Hi.
All right, motion passes, James, would you like to read the by title only?
All right, resolution four dash two zero two four, a resolution of appealing and replacing resolution two zero dash two zero two zero, city of overage administration advisory committee.
Okay, thank you, go ahead.
Can I just confirm that vote is six nil? Six nothing?
Yes.
Yes. All right, we're moving on to thirteen point two, and that's, uh, resolution zero five twenty twenty four, do I hear motion?
Make motion. I move to approve and adopt the resolution zero five dash twenty point four after a second reading by title only.
I'll second that.
All right, motion made by councillor Tarman, seconded by councillor Coker. Any discussion on this? Okay, unheard, the motion was to move to approve and adopt resolution zero five twenty twenty four after a second reading by title only. Jackie, would you call for a vote, please?
Councillor Brewer.
Hi.
Councillor Kenyon.
Hi.
Councillor Hallit.
Hi.
Mayor Ketchum.
Hi.
Councillor Coker.
Hi.
Councillor Tarman.
Hi.
All right, motion passes unanimously. Uh, moving on to thirteen point, oh, I'm sorry, James, go ahead.
Uh, second reading by title only, resolution five dash two zero two four, resolution of feeling and replacing resolution six dash two zero two two, city road bridge audit advisory committee.
Okay. Thirteen point three, that's, uh. Resolution zero six twenty twenty four, do I hear motion on this one?
I'll make motion. I move to approve and adopt resolutions zero six twenty twenty four after a second reading by title only.
I'll second that.
All right, motion made by councillor Tarman, seconded by councillor Kenyon. Any discussion on this one? Nothing heard, the motion was to move and approve and adopt, move to approve and adopt resolution zero six twenty twenty four after a second reading by title only. Jackie, would you call for a vote, please?
Councillor Tarman.
Hi.
Councillor Kenyon.
Hi.
Mayor Ketchum.
Hi.
Councillor Coker.
Hi.
Councillor Hallit.
Hi.
Councillor Brewer.
Hi.
All right, motion passes unanimously, James?
Right, resolution six dash two zero two four, resolution appealing and replacing resolution fifteen dash two zero two zero, city road bridge library boards.
Okay. Moving on to item thirteen point four. And that's, uh, resolution zero seven twenty twenty four, we hear motion.
I move to approve and adopt resolutions zero seven twenty twenty four after a second reading by title only.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion made by councillor Tarman, seconded by councillor Coker, discussion, questions? Nothing heard, motion was, uh, move to approve and adopt resolution zero seven twenty twenty four after a second reading by title only. Jackie, would you call for a vote, please?
Councillor Tarman.
Hi.
Councillor Brewer.
Hi.
Councillor Coker. Hey. Councillor Hallit.
Hi.
Councillor Kenyon.
Hi.
Mayor Ketchum.
Hi. All right, motion passes unanimously, James?
Right, resolution seven dash two zero two four, resolution appealing and replacing resolution one seven dash two zero two zero. City of Bridge Parks and Community Development Advisory Committee.
Okay. Thank you. Item thirteen point five, uh, that's resolution zero eight twenty twenty four, do I hear motion?
I move to approve and adopt resolution zero eight twenty point four after a second reading by title only.
I'll second that.
Motion made by councillor Tarman, seconded by councillor Brewer, questions or discussion? All right, uh, the motion was, uh. To approve and adopt resolution zero eight twenty twenty four. After a second reading by title only, Jackie, would you call for a vote, please?
Yes, councillor Hallit.
Hi.
Councillor Tarman.
Hi.
Councillor Coker. Councillor Brewer.
Hi.
Mayor Ketchum.
Hi.
Councillor Kenyon.
Hi.
Okay.
All right, motion passes unanimously. James?
Right, resolution eight dash two zero two four, resolution appealing and replacing resolution one eight dash two zero two. Republic Public Safety Advisory Committee.
Thank you. Thirteen point six, which is, uh. Resolution zero nine twenty twenty four. I hear a motion.
I move to approve and adopt the resolution zero nine twenty twenty four after a second reading by title only.
I'll second that.
Motion made by councillor Tarman, seconded by councillor Coker. Discussion or questions?
Uh, mayor.
Yes.
I do have one thing, I just want to, um. Make sure to remind all councillors is after. Thirty days, uh, remember, we won't be voting in our communities anymore. After these are. Final, uh, thirty days from now.
Okay. Any other questions or discussion? All right, uh, the motion was to approve and adopt resolution zero nine twenty twenty four after a second reading by title only, uh, Jackie, would you call for a vote, please?
Mayor Ketchum.
Hi.
Councillor Kenyon.
Hi.
Councillor Coker.
Hi.
Councillor Hallit.
Nay.
Councillor Brewer.
Hi.
Councillor Tarman.
Hi.
All right, motion passes five one, do I have that right, James, five one?
Yes.
James?
Right, uh, resolution nine dash two zero two four, resolution appealing and replacing resolution seven dash two zero two two, city road bridge knowledge tourism marketing program. R T and B and transient group tax E R T advisory committee.
Thank you. Moving on to thirteen point seven, and that's resolution ten twenty twenty four, do I hear a motion?
I move to approve and adopt resolution ten dash twenty twenty four after a second reading by title only.
I'll second that.
I'm sorry, who was that, councillor Brewer? Okay. Councillor Tarman, you ran the category on that, so congratulations. Um. Any discussion or questions on that? None heard, the motion was to move, move to approve and adopt resolution ten twenty twenty four after a second reading by title only. Jackie, would you call for a vote, please?
Councillor Tarman.
Hi.
Councillor Coker.
Hi.
Councillor Brewer.
Hi.
Mayor Ketchum.
Hi.
Councillor Kenyon.
Hi.
Councillor Hallit.
Hi.
Motion passes unanimously. James?
All right, resolution ten dash two zero two four, resolution appealing and replacing resolution three dash. Two zero two three, city of Bridge Economic Development Advisory Committee.
Thank you very much, James. Uh, moving on to item thirteen point eight, and that's resolution eleven. Twenty twenty four. Authorizing an additional loan from the Safe Water Drinking Revolving Loan Fund, James?
Right, uh, so as councillor, you probably recall, there's been, uh, lots of overages on the boat number two project. Uh, and the council has already approved those.
Change orders.
Change orders, thank you. Um. And most of that, uh, came from. Once we started reading, realizing we need a holding pump, et cetera. Uh, so in order to fund that. Uh, we need to expand our current loan. Uh, which is currently two hundred and sixty thousand dollars, and to expand that by twenty nine thousand nine hundred and two dollars. With a total of two hundred and thirty nine thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars. Um. But it should be noted that. One hundred and thirty nine thousand nine hundred and fifty one dollars of this loan is totally forgivable. Only the remaining hundred and forty nine thousand nine hundred and fifty one dollars will require repayment. And that is, uh, it's not fixed interest, fixed rate. On that of one percent. That's above thirty years. We have the original funding agreement, does turn one. And this draft resolution. And the, uh, loan board letter for business order. Are included as exhibits. A resolution is necessary to approve the loan authorized, Mayor Ketchum to sign the loan, and then the company app, uh, state. And so, from the first staff, it's been here. All are all in support of this, uh. Resolution. Necessary, you may be proven. What they like to done. To come improvements.
Okay, before we ask, for, for ask for a motion, I'd first like to open it up for public comment on this resolution, if there's anyone that has a public comment on this. Resolution to expand the loan. Okay, nothing heard, uh, do I hear a motion?
I move to approve resolution eleven twenty twenty four, authorizing a loan from this. Safe Water Revolving Loan Fund after a first reading.
I'll second that.
Motion made by councillor Tarman, seconded by councillor Brewer. Uh, time for discussion of comments, any council have? Questions of James on this? James, uh, yeah, I'm sorry, I couldn't even see you, because it was, yeah, go ahead, please.
Um, I wanted to point out that. Either the loan document or the. Agenda item has the dollar amounts. Um. Reversed, it says in the agenda bill, it should be noted that a hundred and thirty nine thousand nine fifty one is forgivable. But on page one of three of the loan, it says the forgivable loan amount is a hundred and forty nine. Nine fifty one, so I think that these. Two dollar amounts just got. What do they call that, flipped?
You are correct, councillor, uh. It's my error on the agenda bill.
Okay, so the contract's correct?
Contract is correct, because I double checked it with the letter brought from the business organ. And both the sort of letters and the amendment document. Both stated that it's higher than one hundred and forty nine thousand nine hundred and fifty one, it's forgivable.
Thank you.
Ten thousand dollar windfall. Thanks, um. So, uh, James, confirm the project is complete?
That's mine, it's me.
Nothing else left, okay. Any other questions of? James? Okay, the motion was, uh, to approve resolution eleven. Twenty twenty four authorized a loan from the Safe Drinking Water Revolving Loan Fund. After our first reading. Jackie, would you call for a vote, please?
Mayor Ketchum.
Hi.
Councillor Brewer.
Hi.
Councillor Tarman.
Hi.
Councillor Hallit.
Hi.
Councillor Coker.
Hi.
Councillor Kenyon.
Hi.
All right, motion passes unanimously. So, given that, do I, are there any other motions to be made?
Just at the point of order, mayor, I think we might, we can do the first reading for the.
Sure, yep, please.
All right, um, resolution eleven dash two zero two four, a resolution authorizing a loan from the Safe Drinking Water Revolving Loan Fund by entering into. Contract with the organ infrastructure. This. City council, the governing body of the city of Bridge, recipient finds. A, the recipient is a community or nonprofit, non-community water system, defined or administrative rule. One twenty three, forty nine, ten. B, see, Safe Drinking Water Act amendments of nineteen ninety six. Published pages one hundred and four, one hundred and eighty two. As amended. Also known as the act, authorize any committee or nonprofit, non-community water system to apply an application with the organ infrastructure financing authority of the city development department, O B D. To obtain financial assistance from the Safe Drinking Water Revolving Loan Fund. See, the recipient, previously entered into a financing contract with the O B D, or the project described. Didn't see of the financing contract. Project number S two two zero zero six, in the principal loan amount of two hundred and sixty thousand dollars, registered twenty seven December. Two thousand twenty M. B, the O B D has approved the recipient's application for additional financial assistance from the Safe Drinking Water Revolving Loan Fund. E, the recipient is required as a prerequisite to the receipt of additional financial assistance from the O B D. To enter into amendment one to the financing contract with the O B D substantially in the form attached here to this today. F. Notice relating to the recipient's consideration of adoption of this. Resolution. I will take that edit. Davis Rejoices to important resolution orders, but. That was published in full accordance with the recipient's charter and laws for public location. Now therefore being resolved by the governing body, the recipient has fault. One, financing loan authorized, the governing body. Authorizes the operation here to execute the financing contract and promiscuity of. Financing documents. And such other documents as needed be required to obtain additional financial assistance. Putting additional loan from the O B D on the condition that the principal amount from the loan. Sorry, of the loan from the O B D to recipient is not, for two hundred and eighty nine thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars, one hundred and forty nine thousand nine hundred and fifty one, eligible for principal forgiveness. If the contract conditions are met. If the interest rate is not more than one percent. If contract conditions are. Met, and one point six five percent if not. Proceeds of loan from the O B D must be applied solely to the cost of the project. Such terms apply in the financing contract. Two, sources of repayment announced payable by the recipient are payable. And sources described in section four of the financing contract. in sources described in section four of the financing contract and if ordered by statutes, section twenty five, eight point two one three, section five, which include A, revenue from the recipient's water system providing special assistance assessment revenue. B, amounts withheld under subsection twenty five, eight point two one three, section six. C, general fund of the recipient. D, any combination of sources listed in paragraphs A to C of this subsection, or B, any other source. Three, additional documents the city has or is hereby authorized to enter into the agreement executing documents or certificates which may be required to obtain financial assistance from the OBD's or the project's financing documents. Or tax exempt status, the recipient comes not to take any action or admit to take any action if taking or omission would cause interest paid by the recipient pursuant to the financing documents not to qualify for the exclusion from gross income provided by section one of the A of the Internal Revenue Code of the eighty sixth amendment. The name of officer of the recipient, that would be Mayor Yan. Mayor of Ridge, uh, the recipient may enter into documents on behalf of the recipient to protect the tax exempt status of the interest paid by the recipient pursuant to the financing documents, and may execute any tax certificate, internal revenue, service forms, other documents as may be required by the OBD or their governing council to protect the tax exempt status of such interest. This resolution does affect it.
All right, thank you, James. So, uh, do I hear another motion since the first vote was unanimous?
I move to approve and adopt resolution eleven dash twenty twenty four. Authorizing a loan from the Safe Drinking Water Revolving Loan Fund after a second reading by title only.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All right, motion was made by Counsel Kenyon and seconded by Counsel Tarman. Any discussion on this second reading? Okay, the motion was to approve and adopt resolution eleven twenty twenty four authorizing a loan from the Safe Water, Safe Drinking Water Revolving Loan Fund after a second reading by title only. Jackie, would you call for a vote, please?
Counselor Hollitt?
Aye.
Counselor Brewer?
Aye.
Mayor Ketchum?
Aye.
Counselor Coker?
Aye.
Counselor Kenyon?
Aye.
Counselor Tarman?
Aye.
All right, motion passes. James?
All right, resolution eleven dash two zero two four, resolution authorizing a loan from the Safe Drinking Water Revolving Loan Fund by entering into a financing contract, the Oregon Infrastructure Finance
Thank you. All right, uh, moving on to item thirteen ten. And it's a resolution twelve twenty twenty four authorizing applying for an Oregon State Parks Planning Grant for the OIP Pump Track. James?
Good, Mayor. All right, uh, so with this one, uh, we found out today after we submitted the grant, the plan, the planning grant to the Oregon State Recreation Department that, uh, we were supposed to do a formal resolution authorizing, uh, that authorizing the city to apply to the grant. Uh, council has already addressed this issue on at least three occasions. Uh, including proving the city to apply to the grant, but we didn't do it in the funding resolution against the OIP pump track grant, uh, twenty thousand dollars. Uh, so we contacted someone at the, uh, Parks Department, and they said they would still allow our application to go through again yesterday, as long as we, um, pass this resolution. Official, uh, by the way, this grant.
Thanks, James. Uh, do I hear a motion on this item? Counsel Kenyon?
Uh, well, first I wanted to clarify the motion. And the draft say ordinance, not, not resolution. Are we talking about? Oh, we're not doing Hunter communications?
No.
I'm, I'm sorry.
Uh, I move to approve resolution twelve dash twenty twenty four authorizing applying for Oregon State Parks Planning Grant to the OIP Pump Track after a first reading.
I'll second.
All right, the motion was made by Counsel Tarman and seconded by Counsel Hollitt. Uh, any discussion or questions of James on this item? Okay, none heard. Uh, the motion was to approve resolution twelve twenty twenty four authorizing applying for an Oregon State Parks Planning Grant for the OIP Pump Track after a first reading. Jackie, would you call for a vote, please?
Counselor Brewer?
Aye.
Counselor Tarman?
Aye.
Mayor Ketchum?
Aye.
Counselor Coker?
Aye.
Counselor Kenyon?
Aye.
Counselor Hollitt?
Aye.
All right, motion passes unanimously. James, can you read the resolution, please?
All right, resolution twelve dash two zero two four, resolution authorizing the state Oak Ridge to apply for a local government grant from the Oregon Parks Recreation Department for planning, design, and development of Oak Ridge Industrial Park for pump track and delegating authority uh, to the City of Oak Ridge Parks Committee Chair Jason Weber to sign the application. Whereas the Oregon Parks and Recreation Department is accepting applications for the local government grant program, LGGDP. And whereas City of Oak Ridge desires to participate in this grant program to the greatest extent possible as it means to provide immediate park and recreation acquisitions, improvements, and enhancements. And whereas the City of Oak Ridge, City Council has identified planning, design, and development of an asphalt bike pump track at the Oak Ridge Industrial Park, OIP Pump Track Park as a high priority City of Oak Ridge. And whereas the City of Oak Ridge has available local matching funds to fulfill the share of obligation related to this grant application, should the grant fund to be awarded. And whereas the City of Oak Ridge will provide active funding for ongoing operations and maintenance of this park and recreation facility should the grant funds be awarded. And now therefore, it is all by the City Council, the City of Oak Ridge, as follows. The Oak Ridge City Council supports and approves submitting a grant application to the ordered Parks and Recreation Department for planning, design, and development at the OIP Pump Track Park. The Oak Ridge City Council has previously approved applying for the LGGDP planning grant, but did so by simple motion rather than formal resolution. On May second, two thousand twenty four, the Oak Ridge City Council approved by vote seven, zero, twenty four thousand dollars of the Oregon Parks and Recreation Park money paid for the research studies for the OIP pump track, you were to be able to apply for the LGGDP planning grant. This resolution shall be effective immediately upon adoption by the Oak Ridge City Council.
Thank you, James. Uh, given this vote was unanimous, is there a second motion to be heard?
I move to approve and adopt resolution twelve dash twenty twenty four authorizing applying for an Oregon State Parks Planning Grant for the OIP Pump Track after a second reading by title only.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second that.
Right, motion was made by Counsel Tarman and seconded by Counsel Brewer. Any discussion or questions on this second reading? Okay, uh, the motion was to approve and adopt resolution twelve twenty twenty four authorizing applying for an Oregon State Parks Planning Grant for the OIP Pump Track after a second reading by title only. Jackie, would you call for a vote, please?
Yep. Mayor Ketchum?
Aye.
Counselor Brewer?
Aye.
Counselor Tarman?
Aye.
Counselor Hollitt?
Aye.
Counselor Coker?
Aye.
Counselor Kenyon?
Aye.
All right, motion passes unanimously. James?
All right, uh, resolution twelve dash two zero two four, resolution authorizing the state of Oak Ridge to apply for a local government grant of the Oregon Parks Recreation Department for planning, design, and development of the Oak Ridge Industrial Park Pump Track Park and delegating authority to City of Oak Ridge Parks Committee Chair Jason Weber to sign the application.
Thank you, James. Uh, we're moving on to item fifteen now, which is, uh, department uh, reports. Fifteen point one is the finance report and uh, Eric Kaitola, our pro tem, is, uh, not available. So if you have a general question that could be answered by James, then please let's talk about it. Um, otherwise, he's available by email for questions, uh, to, uh, to respond to. Uh, any questions on finance that you, that you want James to field? Fifteen point two is the police report. Is Chief Martin aboard?
Uh, he is not, he's asked me to, uh, give the report, uh. First and foremost, Chief Martin was reelected to the Oregon Association Chiefs Police Board of Directors. Pretty big deal. I'm going to press release on that positive uh, news soon. Uh, otherwise, in March, uh, the police responded to, uh, two hundred and fifty seven calls for wire incident reports. They've been able to six in full cases, making five arrests. Additional permission on citations is going to be reported, which includes, uh, over twelve thousand dollars in fines, good citations made in March alone. Three officers also went to the Y Conference in March. And Chief Martin inserted that's a book to the Oregon Association Chiefs Conference.
Thank you, James. Any questions of James on the police report? You might be able to answer. Okay. What's fifteen point three? That's fire EMS report. Is Chief Hollitt on board?
He actually texted me about one minute before the meeting saying that something had come up, like something duty related. Asked me to give the report, uh. It hired a, a number of new volunteers. Uh, the report did some posts of recent rates. And there are stats for the month of April as well. Seven volunteers specifically. It's additional statistics on page three.
Any questions on fire EMS? Okay, moving on to fifteen point four. That's the public works report. Rick, is that you?
Yes, sir. Um, later council citizens for this month of April. Uh, all the works contributed eighteen million gallons of water. Be a thirteen point six million gallon of wastewater, and eighteen service orders, one on no cakes. No, uh, water repairs. Uh, or no property damage, uh, to water leaks and molds for meter services. Other, for tasks performed were mowed and made right for tree planting, mowed and cleared right away for parade. All the repairs, street sweeping, sort of main light painting and flushing of problematic lines. Water meter repair, some replacements for the meters, and dealt with linked by accounts. And there was a lot of time, lot of hours, put it in prepping for the parade. Uh, as far as the way you
Thank you, Rick. Any questions about public works report?
I do. Do you have any for the crosswalks or drainage painting again this summer?
Not currently.
Is there an opportunity for it or too busy or?
Maybe.
Okay. I had someone approach me and I asked them to contact you, so what they did.
They contacted you. But I don't really have plans at the moment.
Okay, any other questions for Rick? Okay, hearing none. Um, item sixteen, other business, any other business? Okay. Uh, down to public comment. Uh, we'll start online. Is there any online public comment? No, I can see the hands raised, so please let me know if there is. How about in the room? Any public comment in the room? Last chance for public comment. All right, I guess we'll look for a motion to adjourn.
I still move.
All right. Meeting adjourned at seven twenty five. Have a good night, everybody.
I have questions.
Good night.